Okay, ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise to join me in for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment, please? We thought we'd take some time. We have basically something to comment related to the loss of some faculty member and also of a driver and some other items that involve a moment of silence.
Sure. Joseph Kajowski, he was a bus driver for first students who drove routes for the Penn Trapper students at the high school, Trapper Middle School, Trapper Elementary School, on Route 21 for three years. He was a retired steel worker for U.S. Steel, and he was very friendly, dedicated, loved being with the kids, and the kids enjoyed him very much, and they always called him Mr. Joe. And he passed away on October 2nd, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for him.
His meeting was called, what, at 7:04? I'll go right into special reports. IU 7, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, the IU report. I would encourage everyone to look at the reports that came with our packets. I don't know if I could add to that. Basically, the business conducted, since we have a very limited involvement with the IU, I don't have anything to offer or add in addition to this report. So, just personal, we should do so. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We're going to the libraries and Legislative Council. It's myself, Legislative Council, nothing to add as of the fact that we're going to the next, on the 14th, I'll be leaving for the state convention and the PSBA convention, and I have several items that I should bring back there. It's very informative, it's up-to-date information. I think the key areas that I'll bring back info for us on is certainly updates on PlanCon. Again, barely, very, how do I put it? Not very positive at this particular time. There's also the impact of the NCLB, the No Child Left Behind waiver on our student graduation testing requirements, where cyber and charter school legislation is. We are making some headway there, finally. Where is prevailing wage, where unfunded mandates reform, and then some things that are starting to come to the forefront now because we've had so many distressed schools and so many municipalities that are failing. The plan to deal with them all is not real good statewide, and many are on the border. So, the issue we're looking at here is school district closure and student transfer rights, which has become more and more of an issue every month. And finally, the Common Core standards, which are no longer called the Common Core standards, where they are at that particular time also. As I go on, very briefly, the Legislative Council. On the No Child Left Behind waiver and the education evaluation system, we're hoping at some time here in the fall, Dr. Matt is going to continue on and do some type of presentation with the staff covering those areas that are very critical because of the outcome of graduation related to particularly the evaluation system. The Common Core standards, again, we just had an update on that from a PSBA in the last week. They're called the Pennsylvania Core Standards. The impact of some of the lobbyists has, it doesn't affect it us so much because we always maintain the local control. It was never really an issue. But some of the potential interference related to telling what private schools would have to do and how they have to modify what they did, and some of the parochial schools, the same thing. Also, there was an issue related to aspects of how you invest your funding, and if you have to be involved in a special education, how much involvement would be with the special education students? There was a modification of that a little bit, although, again, special education students are protected by federal law, and that will involve some more intense discussion. Those are some of the areas. There's four or five others that I'll bring back that I only could read very briefly from the information piece last week that I'll return with next week. The last area was the, that came into play, relates to trying to improve media. This is, came, this came out of ultimately a legislative discussion as a commentary with many school districts starting to use this related to their school boards. And this is something we talked a little bit about here among our colleagues, but I'm expanding the idea to talk about using video commercials and public announcements, using our forum here as a school board. We're already on YouTube. We're presenting ideas, we're presenting our concept. We'd like to expand more on that. We like to do community service. I want to call it commercials, what have you, something else that expands our information piece. Because our audience on YouTube is generally growing, we can use this as another media to support our community at that stage. I'll have more detail for you on that because there are several examples of how it's been used in school systems in presentations at PSBA. That's all I have related to the Legislative Council as far as libraries. I was invited to attend the Trapper Library Board Meeting tomorrow night. I'll be there and share with them the general information related to the regional survey that was done on library studies, as we consider the concept of trying to modify our potential funding for libraries within the school system. So, I'll be there tomorrow night at 7:00. And that's all I have under the Libraries and Legislative Council. If I could go to current technology, Mr. Petrusi?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have the minutes in your packet. Just a little update on a few things here. They're implementing an SAP program, smart technology professional development geared to special education students. They're doing with the CAD program, computer assisted drafting. Due to the fact that teachers retire, there are only six students in the program, and they are going to phase it out. Of course, it's low enrollment, it's very difficult to keep that program going. Okay, on the renovations, all boilers and all pumps are installed, and they should be operating by the middle of this month. So far, the weather in October is real good, but they're installed and they're on target for beginning full operation October 15th. Welding shop started, for all the fans, it started September 19th and will be completed by Thanksgiving or sooner. The auto shop, again, the exhaust system, anticipation of this system is to be done by end of October. Roof replacement, weather permitting, they hope to get this done by December. If not, of course, it'll be delayed. The lighting, the lighting in the office, shop, and parking lots are all due between mid-October and mid-November to be complete. And the cooling tire will be done by mid-December. The electrical switchgear, this is one thing, because they had to shut down the school for it, this will be done in June of 2014. The greenhouse controls by the end of October. Okay, that takes care of all the updates. In the next month, I'll give you more updates exactly as what has been completely done. And the goodie trays, we had a meat and goodie department, meat and cheese tray, vegetable tray, pepperoni and cheese pillow puffs, parsley potato potatoes, cookie tier, ice pinwheels and turnovers, and a tossed salad with broccoli, cauliflower, croutons, red onions, shredded cheese and eggs, and also the balsamic dressing. That's all. And next meeting is going to be 7:14, the 16th. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Recreation Board, Penn Township?
Thank you, Mr. President. My meeting was on the 26th. Got an update from Cheryl on Phase 1 of the municipal park project, and here's where we stand. The drawdown permit for the pond construction was extended through September 26th. The pond enlargement is completed, and the pond has filled almost entirely with rainwater. The stormwater swells feeding the pond still need to be connected, and the fish habitat has been installed. The quote for the tree shrubs to create the vegetative buffer along Deerfield has been attained in the order placed for delivery October 15th. Road Department is installing the trees and shrubs. Remaining walking trail will totally encircle the pond and connect with the existing walking trail. The road department is currently paving and will continue work in the park mid-October. Handicap parking spaces must be paved and marked. Bents and trail bowlers need to be installed. Vine grading and seeding must take place upon completion of all construction. All invoices and canceled checks must be submitted with the final payment request to DCNR. The final DCNR inspection must be scheduled and completed. The entire project must be completed and submitted by December 31st of this year. We had a member of the board step down, Skip Fox, resigned, so I'm sure the commissioner's going to put an advertisement in the paper to fill that position, so if anybody's interested, keep an eye out for that. And I did one other thing. I did make a suggestion to Cheryl regarding the summer playground. Since district gets out earlier, maybe she could adjust her schedule and go a little earlier and then skip the week of July 4th because that's obviously one of the least attended weeks of the year, so. So, all happy, Mr. President?
Thank you. We'll go into Trapper Borough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our meeting on last, December 30th, last Monday, we have another resignation. Cheryl Pearson resigned. Seven board members, all we have is five available right now, and of course, that gets a little tough for getting a quorum, but the five there, so far, working very hard. Halloween Parade is the 27th, and the ceremonies with the magician and the balloon artist, et cetera, is going to be at the Legion. Then the trick-or-treat night, of course, is October 31st, which is a Thursday. A big wedding, I told you, supposed to be 400 people. They said that the mother bride, she embellished a little bit, there's 200 at the wedding. It's still a pretty nice crowd. Our fund balance is $23,906, which is very favorable. But now, I called the borough major, they see our fund balance there, and they want us to partake in care of roofs and 2B stone, and they want to whittle down at this, and I have a hard time with that. So, right now, but I think we're coming to a, some kind of set guideline as to exactly what we're supposed to spend and not spend. And the auction will be October to 20, I'm sorry, February 22nd, as usual, last Saturday of February, and hopefully, everything goes good like in the past. We have all kinds of plans and things we want to spend money for. We have a playground in Kermit Avenue, $100,000 project. How much we're going to pay for, I don't know. The basketball court at Woodlawn needs repaved. How much we're going to pay for, I don't know. And the pavilion at Woodlawn needs to be redone again and needs a roof done also. Now, on September 22nd, they had an all-volunteer day at Trapper at the Manchester Room, and it went very well. And I have a certificate here since the school district, I was going to give it to Jim Bracco because him and Glenn Leonard were always so very generous to us during the auction. And this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Penn Trapper School District in recognition of the outstanding service to the Trapper Recreation Board. And I would give this to you, Mr. Harrison. Please give this to Mr. Bracco, and pleased to have him display it because him and his crew, without their cooperation, and I know we don't get rid of a lot of material past its prime, but still, they are very generous to the youth of Trapper, and I would gladly give this to you. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Penn Borough?
Oh, that's not recreation. Wait, real quick, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
She, it's not recreational, it's not. The Trapper World Bridge will be, they opened on the 27th. The big ceremony, what, they said 100 people, and they said there are buses with veterans they said are going to be there, and a big ceremony in Manchester Room. I'm sorry, the ceremony will be November 29th.
No.
No, 9th. November 9th, correct, right? That's why, that wasn't.
All right.
You helped me out a little bit, too, in this.
Nick, is that October 27th, bridge is opening?
October 28th.
28th.
The bridge is opening for full use?
Yes.
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 It's early.
I was just saying, that's early.
Well, there was a penalty for the deadline, and the deadline, I thought, was to be December, the first week in December, I believe. And if Georgia or Chris, if you know, was at the deadline, was there a deadline? I believe it's December sometime, you two. But they said they had to get that done before the deadline was due. And there will be a traffic light there, too, also. But you're right about what you said with those ball fields. There's people down there right now. Once that bridge opens up, it's going to be pretty interesting.
You can see what he wants to do in the big scheme of things?
Where down in Trapper? Trapper, I think, is in for a mini.
You've got a restaurant down in Trapper right now. Look out.
Yeah, sure.
The home's on the corner there is going to be jamming.
It's in for a mini boom. I saw what Cal Ripken did at the Baltimore, because I drove by that a few times. Of course, I'm not going to do that magnitude, but it's.
His plan's putting nine fields in down there.
Yeah.
He's going to have those fields every weekend, four.
And I understand lighted, lighted and turf, is that correct to? Lighted and turf? Are there going to be lighted?
Not turf.
Lighted?
Lighted, but not turf initially, no.
No turf, okay. But then, but back to the bridge again. The big ceremony is going to be November the 9th, I believe. Am I right about that, Tony?
Yeah.
November 9th?
November 9th.
Yeah, and the, they wanted to do both together with PennDOT and the ceremony, but they, PennDOT didn't want to say anybody there on holiday, which would be Sunday, so they'd pay time and half, which I understand also, since the PennDOT's going to open up on the 28th, which is going to be a Monday, and then the big ceremony with all the thing tiers. I want to say this, too. Growing up in a small town, Trapper, the most popular family doctor is Dr. Pogue, and I don't know if you people remember Dr. Pogue or not. He is not 99 years old, and they asked him to be the first one to go across the bridge, and he denied. That's just his low-key makeup, one, many people in Trapper, I'm talking, we have 3,000 people, he's going to be 4,000. Wouldn't go to, he wouldn't even charge you. You know, you bring your.
Five bucks, Nick, when I was a kid.
It was a five bucks.
The insurance you had, five bucks.
Have you guys known, Tim? I tell you, he still shovels snow, he still drives a car.
Oh, my God.
He wears a big hat, top coat, and a scarf, and he's out there, he's shoveling snow, but he declined. He said he doesn't want the recognition. It's just too bad, too. We named the pavilion down to BY after Dr. Pogue, but very popular guy. But, so you read, the traffic light count up in Trapper, and the bridge at this time next month will be open and operating, and everything looks pretty good at, and everybody's pretty excited about it. They think, they'd say 100 people, 200 people, what'd she say?
I thought 200.
200 people.
I think.
That is all, Mr. President. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Petrusi, not a problem. Penn Borough, no, unable to make meetings when they are available, so Mr. Dreystein had agreed to, so I'll show up at the garage. So, I'll stop at the garage, what an informal discussion. Last one I had with him took five minutes, and I got all I needed to know from Penn, so my apologies. It seems to work, so. PTARC, Mrs. Zissim?
We had our meeting today. The current fund balance as of the end of September was $72,000, $72.4,000. That is up almost $16,000 from last year. Because of that, Nick actually proposed that we discontinue our grant writing fee. We had a fee of approximately 2.5% so that if you wanted us, not us, but Cheryl, to write a grant for you for $100,000, you would give us 2.5% as a fee for writing that grant. And truthfully, during the time that fee was imposed, it wasn't paid once. We didn't have any new grants, nothing, so. But since we're much more solvent than we were way back when we instituted that, we decided to eliminate that. All right. Our next, our big thing today was the budget, and we passed our budget today. And there's a couple of key things I just wanted to highlight on the budget, and that'll be the end of my report. For all the participating entities, the school district and the applied community, the rate of contribution will be the exact same as last year. Now, moving forward, we did a couple of things today to help contain some of our costs moving, as I said, moving ahead. For 2014, starting January 2014, Cheryl is going to get a 2.2% raise. Now, she has not had a raise in five years, so she's going to get the 2.2%, but she's also going to be getting at the end of this year, a performance bonus. Last year, we instituted a performance bonus system instead of a raise. And one of the reasons we did it was to give encouragement for her and her assistant to get PTARC in a more stable position financially, and she, they have both done a wonderful job toward that goal. So, she will also be getting in January approximately, if the numbers stay the same, and they may fluctuate by the end of the year, approximately a $3,000 bonus. So, we decided, moving forward, that we are going to eliminate the bonus program. We're at a point where things are heading in the right direction. Our numbers are looking good, our registrations are looking good. We feel that, and it's also cost containment, that we are going to, we do not need to have that dangling, that dangling carrot there, so we're going to eliminate the performance bonus going forward. As far as healthcare costs, which is a big issue for everybody, the healthcare costs for Cheryl for the upcoming year, for her and her husband, is approximately $13,000. We decided today that that is going to be our max. So, if healthcare would increase by $500 for 2015, then Cheryl would have to pay the difference between the $13,000 and the $13,500. Her additional contributions would be $500. So, as a group, we are going to limit what we pay out for her healthcare coverage to $13,000. And the last thing, they, they had asked that we increase the assistance hours up from 30, from 30 hours to 34 hours. We did agree to that, but we also made it clear that if our financial situation would worsen, we would, we would consider cutting back the hours. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Just one thing, did you mention the incentive is a one-time rule?
Yeah, the incentive's gone away after this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
It will not be every year, anything?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Just one question. Good to hear the numbers are up.
Oh, yeah, considerably.
Are the numbers more in the adult education area or the child education area?
Well, the swimming numbers are always really slow, and they seem to be increasing, but I think she does have a lot of the adult programs, they seem to be growing also.
So, your impression is it's more the adult end than it is the child end?
I think the dancing and the aquatics in the child are improving. They have a new dance instructor, she's doing a wonderful job, she's bringing people I'm sorry. My understanding is you've got a couple of programs really strong in the youth programs that are growing, and then you have some of the senior programs that are also growing. The growth is kind of off the standard expectation.
Balanced, okay.
Maybe the middle end is not as much growing. How's that?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mrs. Zissim.
That's all I have.
Thank you. PTCEF?
Sure. We had a meeting, the first of the year, a meeting on October 2nd, and it was actually our first of our new school year meeting. We decided our fundraising, our main fundraiser this year will be PT's Got Talent. We're hoping to get some access from elementary school, middle school, and high school students. More information will be sent out to each of the schools in the upcoming weeks, as well as our website, and as well as the foundation website, www.pentrappfordfoundation.org. Currently, we have a student activity grant open for teachers and sponsors of clubs and organizations within the district. The grant was emailed to all staff members and administrators in the school district on October 3rd, and it will close on October 18th. The summer revenue that we collected through the EITC program and the Kelly family donation totaled $3,280.29, and we have approximately $17,000 in our budget. So, we're doing pretty good for a small organization, not too many board members. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Executive session, we're four minutes late. Apologize for that, it's always sometimes difficult to conclude a thought, and we basically use the time to receive information regarding to potential legal matters. It seems like just about anything anymore, if you potentially airing something public that may imply or infer on some individual that it is potentially litigious, and that's just the nature of the way the game has changed, and to receive legal advice, we also discuss the personnel matters and to discuss negotiations. And now, I'll go into information, and turn this back to Dr. Harris.
Sure, thank you. Penn Middle won the 100.7 Stars Shine a Light on Bullying Contest, which focuses on helping children and teens in spotting and addressing bullying in their schools. We were informed that we won last Monday over the air. Then, we realized that Penn, um, Trapper Middle School was also in the top five, so the principal asked if they could have a joint middle school assembly at the high school. The radio station agrees, so it's on. Both Penn Middle School and Trapper Middle School students will travel to the high school this Thursday afternoon. The assembly will include the Bubba Show crew and a performance by A Great Big World, courtesy of Epic Records. Thanks to all those who voted, what a great opportunity this is for our kids. In addition, I'm sending around a thank you letter from the Kelly family for the press box dedication and the ceremony in the honor of the late Pat Kelly. That was a well-attended ceremony, the dedication was great, and the family was really appreciative of all your efforts. I also want to clarify that the amount given by Sean Renner for the cyber school payment that Penn Trapper is required to pay, we actually have 67 students that attend one of several cyber schools at a cost of $735,491.65. The original amount was much lower because when he asked for the cost of PA cyber school, he only received the cost of that school, and as you know, we have more than one cyber school that we have to pay in the district. We have about six that we are currently paying now. So, that is why the confusion came in there. So, we are at a much higher amount than what he quoted you before. We received our certificate for the Command Excellence in School Safety Crisis Planning for All Hazards. It's a long title, it's upside down. This is for school safety, strategic and operational planning, and prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery for all hazards, as defined by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA. I'd like to thank our safety committee and our police chief for all of their support, and the board for all of your input in allowing us to do all the safety programs that we do throughout the year. There will be a spaghetti dinner for Freya Ware on October 20th at the high school from 1:00 to 7:00, tickets will be available at the door. The supplies for engineering at elementary arrived at all the elementary schools last week. We had 195 boxes of STEM materials to support us in our search to adopt a new elementary STEM curriculum for the following school year. As you know, each building is going to be piloting several different STEM projects this year because next year, our assigned series was up for adoption, and instead of doing a new textbook, we're going to actually devote it to doing STEM activities. So, each school is deciding, taking some of the STEM activities and seeing which one we actually want to adopt for the following school year. The students in grade 5 at all the elementary schools attended Deer Valley last week, and it was a huge success. I would like to thank the school board for supporting the program, the 300 students that participated. I would also like to thank Dr. Koschka, Mr. Leonard, and Dr. Trey, who each volunteered to help out at Deer Valley this year. Any comments on those? You survived?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, too. Obviously, this is my second time going, my older son went when he was a junior. It just is better than it was. I mean, it was great back then, it's better. We seem to continue to refine the classes so the kids are engaged. I mean, it was outstanding. Weather was great. I also want to thank Dallas. Dallas actually did the class, did a great job, kept it interesting on the different items breaking down from the decomposition, and kept it great. It was, I guess you're going to be coming back in future years, Dylan.
Is he the guy that were calling Dr. Callpost?
It was great, though.
It was part of our presentation.
Yeah, but he did a great job. I just want to continue to stress to this group, the outstanding program that the teachers and administrative folks do up there running it, and it's first class. And my full support, and if you're ever wavering on the dollars that we spend up there, spend three days up there, and you're going to be reaffirmed, it's the right thing to do for these kids. They, it's the last thing we record, so.
And I'd like to add to that, it was my privilege to be able to participate in that. I told them if I enlisted in that opportunity, that I wanted to be, I didn't want to be a freeloader, I didn't want to be, I wanted to participate in a show that worked me up on the auction. It kept me very busy, it was very rewarding, and it was composting, recycling, and that comes really natural, because I don't know how many of you folks realize, but right here in our community, the biggest pile of dirt we have, it's in motion, is our landfill. That is one big composting and recycling site up there. So, it's part of my job, they send us to, he sends us, myself and a couple of the other staff members of school, period, I can keep up the speed on that, so it just blends in really good. I re-enlisted for another hitch next year, I hope to be up there next year, expanding on the program. It's my privilege, and I really enjoyed it. And I would encourage anybody that hasn't been there to take a look at it. It's a very, very good program, exposes the youngsters and some of the parents to things they might never see otherwise. Very good.
How many years we've done, Dr. Marcy started, how many years have we done that?
89 was our first year.
28, they said, something like that.
28 years?
And finally, on my end, I would have one more thing. The Battle of the Bell Game between Gateway and Penn Trapper is on the 18th of October at Gateway. Right now, Gateway currently has the bell after winning it back from us last year, and hopefully, we can win it back. I have, want to turn it over to Scott and Grace, he has a couple of things to report as well. Just to make it a little longer.
Just quickly, I wanted to mention that Mr. Cooper, athletic trainer, as you know, he's quite involved in state and national organizations with athletic training, and he was. And he was, just a point of interest, that he's common, it's common for expert, media and different agencies to seek his advice and opinions about different matters. And he was quoted in the Wall Street Journal on September sixteenth in what kids should know about spinal injuries and sports. So it's just good PR for the district, just wanted to make you all aware that, you know, we do send them to some of these national conferences. You see them coming across your plate, they pay for them. And he's very well-versed and knowledgeable in his field, and he's sought after for his opinion in his field. The Huffington Post did a little thing in the spring of last year, he did a video conference on that. So he was just a point of interest, that Larry does a great job for us, and he's well-known throughout the country, actually. So kudos to Mr. Cooper. Also wanted to mention the school profile scores. You know, as you know, the state sent those out for release for the public on Friday. And a number of schools throughout the state, quite a few schools, secondary school, middle school and high schools, suppressed a lot of their data. And we suppressed our data in the high school and at Penn Middle School because of the errors that occurred in the bubbling of a particular area of the test, which related to what was called an end-of-course exam. So what I didn't like about it is the state, you know, relied on kids to bubble in what their end-of-course exam would be. For example, if you were enrolled in biology, you have to bubble a circle that says this is your end-of-course exam. If you're in algebra one, you do the same. If you're in literature, ninth grade literature, you do the same. But we have kids taking keystones, you know, throughout grades nine, or actually in grade six, seven and to middle school, all the way up to grade eleven. And depending on what the kids bubble, that's your end-of-course exam. And that data is very important as it relates to our P-Voss scores. So it measures growth from one year to the next. So if the kid didn't bubble it right, it made your scores incorrect. So the state has given every school district an opportunity to suppress that data so it's not released in error. So we chose to do so, and we're going to wait for the state to tell us how to do the corrections. We'll do that, and the new scores will be released in January sometime. So that's just an update on our school profiles. The elementaries and Trafford Middle Schools are all on the site, so those are available for everybody to see. You go to the PDE site and click on the county, and you'll be able to see our scores there. Okay, any questions?
Matt, I just got to comment. I know at some stage here, we're going to offer more detail related to the outcome of the scores. Personally, I have a problem with that. I find the P-Voss expectations to be unrealistic. In many ways, it's certainly unfair and a real disadvantage to what is a true comparison of student growth. But that's a personal opinion, but we'll attempt to document it some later time with it. Once our scores are fully identified, and then we'll relate it to how it is practically applied. Thank you.
And that's all we have for information. Next week, we have athletics and extracurricular. We're going to ask that you employ personnel approve a volunteer coach. Under budget and finance, we're going to ask that you approve reimbursement for credits earned and approve project proposed for equal logic addition. If you remember, that is Jason Caruso in September did a presentation on the different items for server that he wanted to purchase, and that was actually the name given to the project. I don't know if you can look on paper, it's a different name, but that would be for a cost of thirty-nine thousand six hundred. Under Buildings, Grounds and Safety, Employee Personnel. Under Employee Relations, Negotiations, Transportation. We want to approve the SEIU Local Thirty-two BJ contract. Under Food and Service, there will be nothing to report. Under Personnel and Curriculum, approve substitute teachers and support personnel. Approve new parent volunteers. Employee Personnel, approve leave requests, approve student teacher assignments. Under Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Acceptance of Information Committee Meeting Minutes of September third, two thousand thirteen. Final Approval of Board Policies, Board Operation Guidelines and Administrative Regulations that were tentatively approved as a cover of board meeting. Tentatively approve additional board policies and administrative regulations. Under Taxes, Insurance, Censes, appoint for capita an Occupation Residence Tax Collector. And that would be all that we would ask to have approved at next week's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Recognition of Visitors, we have two this evening. I'll review quickly the audience recognition rules. You've got to state your name, address and group affiliation. Your statement's got to be limited to five minutes, which we do have in a timer. All statements should be directed to me, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I would interrupt your statement if it's too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. And at this time, we'd ask Sarah, Sally Brattle, she could do that.
Thank you. I wanted to publicly, we need to thank Mr. Bracco for the railing he put in. If he leaves the gym, he goes to the left at the end of that walkway. I had mentioned to him last year that I would appreciate it was the railing put in. I've talked to other people about it, but either I did a better job of explaining it, or he knew more about the building. But anyhow, it was really nice looking railing, and please, thank you. Secondly, I don't know, Mr. England, were you talking about that, or was he talking about the scores that were to be made known by the Pennsylvania, by the state last Monday on the percentage rating of school districts? Is that what you were talking?
That's correct, right.
Okay, so we don't know what our percentage is as a school district yet?
Well, they rate each school individually, okay? So we know what scores our elementary schools receive. We don't know the high school and Penn Middle School at this point.
Okay, how do our elementary schools do? Do we know?
We actually do.
I have the, I have the scores. Trafford Middle was seventy-nine point four, McCullough was ninety point four, Sunrise was eighty-three point two, Level Green was eighty point seven, Harrison Park was seventy-eight point seven, and Trafford Elementary was seventy-seven point five, and that's out of the one hundred.
Okay, thank you. Third, I wasn't here last meeting because of the rain. But did we recognize Students of the Month yet? Are we still doing that?
Next week.
Okay. My suggestion, I have a suggestion to make then. The shelves back here that are empty, could we maybe on one of them highlight our Students of the Month? Put the pictures of them and a bio of them, and keep them there for the year? And also, one of the things I missed is we had displays from the different schools in the other boardroom in the other building. Is there any possibility we could use those shelves to put displays in the different schools? So that people, including the school board members, can see what our schools are doing? Because the shelves are there doing nothing. And my fourth thing, again, I'm asking, can we begin a letter-writing program to Green State PlanCon? I know Dr. Trey said it's very difficult to get other schools to do that. But it was a hundred and seventy-five schools waiting for PlanCon money. We've seen at least a hundred that would be interested in getting money or doing something. Years ago, we had a representative list cooperate with PT. You know, the community went into a letter-writing campaign, it worked. I just did some quick math. If we, assuming we have approximately twenty people up here, county administrators and school board members. If we wrote to our legislators, we wrote this House Appropriations Committee, Youth and Aging, both Senate and House, and the Education, both Senate and House. That would mean approximately one thousand letters coming out of PT. If we engage that to a hundred school districts in the state, that's a hundred thousand letters. I don't know that our legislatures can ignore that. So just, I'm saying again, please, let's start doing something. I don't think we can say, well, let's wait, do we have a new governor? Because it might not happen. So let's try to do something to bring PlanCon in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I have that perfect?
Certainly, take into consideration your suggestions, your way to the decor in here, and certainly your thoughts about trying to promote the efforts related to having PlanCon reintroduced. I know everybody locally is on board to that to some degree, and we feel comfortable with that. But it's getting extremely difficult to try to convince the dominant authority in the eastern part of the state, which we have that much influence over.
It's easier than it was ten years ago.
Also, size prevailing rage, too.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of issues all interlocked together, but we haven't given up, and we're finding our avenues to try to work at it. That's another one, hopefully we can get something going that will be the most productive way to do this, to convince someone to do the right thing.
Yeah, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, you know, we need to do everything possible.
I understand.
It's very irritating, they tell you, they give you no money, they tell you what you got to pay.
Exactly. I know one year I had worked with a friend on a swimming pool at Queter at Upper St. Clair. The amount of money I was making a week was unbelievable.
Mr. Concus, Chuck Concus?
How you doing?
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, my address is two oh six Chris Drive, resident of Penn Township. And first of all, I want to thank everybody here in the school board for your service. I just passed out the president, the man of our council. And I can see by your crowd here, people really appreciate what you're doing. And they're usually here if they're screaming it hard about your raised taxes or something affects our kids as far as the coach. So believe me, sitting behind the table, I know what you go through. Just real quick, I understand with some future upgrades going on in the school district, just some of the buildings. Is there anybody on the school board or in the district that has been working on or looking at the PA Act One Twenty-nine energy rebates that are out there and will be available? If you do lighting retrofits, different types of energy savings. Is there anybody in particular that's working on that or pursuing that?
Well, from an architect perspective, they're aware of those. And as, it's funny you ask that question, Chuck.
If it's all right, I'm going to pass these around. This is just an informational flyer for us, energy, gas, on it.
Or Hank, Hank, to be honest.
Yeah, Hank, Hank.
Could we defer that to you, Hank?
Sure, we, our office tracks all of the rebates, and we look for anything that we can get to the schools and bring that information to them. You've gone through and done some retrofitting of some of your lights and some of your energy efficient items on this building in the past. So some of that stuff you've already used.
So you received the rebates on them?
It was, it was back in, when was that? It was ninety-six that you went through that? So I am not sure if the rebates came through, but I believe...
It's something totally different. If you can see on here by the information that I handed out, I'm going to need one of those bottom copies. I'll try to be brief, thanks, Tony. This is actually Pennsylvania legislation that was enacted in the fall of two thousand and eight, so this is totally different funding. It's basically energy, like you're very familiar with the T-twelves, the T-eights, electronic ballasts, different things like that, retrofitting out to LED light bulbs. Just wanted to say that the monies are available, the monies are out there. We have helped a lot of our, I work also for a company called Scott Electric Greensburg, an electrical wholesaler, so there. And I've worked with the school district in the past with Mr. Leonard, who currently with Mr. Bracco. We are a co-scorers member, so that's how we do business with you through the pricing. But just to make a long story short, we help our customers. I just did a project with Admiral Perry Boat Tech School. Thirty-six thousand dollars in material to be purchased, lamps, new ballasts, new light fixtures. We were able to help them obtain a thirteen thousand dollar rebate on that. Worked with the University of Pittsburgh on a project, hundred thousand dollars, again, lamps, retrofits. There was no charge for our company helping with it. Just as a member of the community, you have to volunteer those services if you do need any help on filing any type of rebates. This is a new program that's out here, so just wanted to make you aware of it. And if you're looking for any other additional information, I could bring it to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
No questions? Okay, we're at this time, we're ready to adjourn. And we have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven forty-eight, executive session.